Yes, test. Right chair, we're all set for seven.
Thank you.
Kidding me, let's call to order the planning commission meeting of August 25th at 7:00 PM. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyvale prides itself on a rich diversity of our residents. We are committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of our diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. This planning commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission for consent calendar or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the commission's authority, generally referred to as within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the planning commission agenda. Use the show captions button to view captions on Zoom. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close the public hearing on the agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to the time period set for public comments for the agenda, which will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city's website and on the planning commission meeting agenda. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording officer, may we please have the oral call?
Commissioner Saroni.
Present.
Chair Iglesias.
Present.
Commissioner Segura.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Fagoni.
Present.
Vice Chair Shukla.
Present.
Commissioner Pine.
Present.
We have seven commissioners present.
Thank you. Alright, this brings us to oral communications. This is the public's opportunity to address the commission on topics not listed on tonight's agenda. Again, I repeat. This is an opportunity for the public to address issues to the commission that are not already on our agenda for tonight. This section is limited to 15 minutes and may be extended or continued after the public hearings general business section of the meeting. Individuals may only speak once during oral communications. This planning commission meeting is a limited public forum and the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the commission's authority, which is known as the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are outside the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. This allows the commission to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and protects the rights of other speakers. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer, raise your digital hand now, or dial star nine on his telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. The speakers will have three minutes to speak. So, this is the opportunity, to be very clear, I know a lot of you are here tonight to talk about the, an item we already have on our agenda. This is not the time for that, that's forthcoming. But if there are, if there are folks that want to speak on items not already on our agenda, now would be an opportunity. Alright, seeing no one here. Because of the nature of remote communications, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Therefore, speakers are warned to limit their comments to subjects that fall within this commission's authority to decide or take action. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on oral communications?
We do not, Chair.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close oral communications. This brings us to our consent calendar. I'll go ahead and open public comment on consent calendar items. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer, raise your digital hand now, or dial star nine on telephone to wish, to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. And this is consent calendar, not the agenda item that we have next, our general business. Would anyone like to speak on a consent calendar item before we move to remote speakers? Alright, recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
We do not, Chair.
Alright, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and close public comment and ask for a motion for my colleagues. Vice Chair Shukla.
Thank you, thank you Chair. I moved the motion for last times meeting. Do I need to speak anything else?
No, so you, so to-
Just move the motion to, yeah.
Okay, as, as published.
Thank you.
Alright, so the motion is to move the minutes as published. Do I have a second? Commissioner Davis.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Our recording officer, please connect the vote.
The motion passes with four yeses and three abstentions from Commissioner Segura, Commissioner Pine, and Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Alright, this takes us to our general business item for the evening. We only have one item. And that is item 25-0868. It is a proposed project. Appeal of decision by the Director of Community Development approving a design review to demolish an existing home and construct a new two-story single-family home resulting in 3,579 square feet, 3,174 square feet living area, and 405 square feet garage, and 34.8% floor area ratio. The location is 180 Donner Court. Is there a staff report?
Uh, yes. Okay. It should be displaying. Okay, great. So, again, the address is 180 Donner Court. And my name is Julia Klein, project planner. So... This is just an aerial showing the project site in relation to the other streets nearby. This is south of Evelyn, and the nearest large major street is South Mary. Just a summary of the information that's contained in the staff report. As you'll recall from the staff report, the proposed project, the basic data is repeated here in this project data sheet with the proposed information on one column and the required permitted information on the second column. Essentially, the property is zoned in the R zero district, given that at the time of subdivision, the minimum lot size needed to be 6,000. This particular site is larger at 10,000, at slightly over 10,000 square feet. The allowable threshold for staff level decision on a single-family project is 3,600, so as long as you're under that threshold, then the decision may stay at staff level. The proposed gross floor area is under that at 3,578 square feet. Additionally, another threshold is 45% FAR. So again, if you're over 45% FAR, then that would elevate the project review to planning commission. This one is under. So that is part of the reason why the original project stayed at staff level. In summary, the findings for supporting the project are included in attachment two. And basically, the project meets the city's zoning code requirements and generally meets the, is generally consistent with the single-family dwelling home techniques. So those are guidelines. This is a site plan just for those that may be viewing this at home. The project is, the proposed building is, first floor is shown in white. And then the hashed area is where the proposed second story is. Just highlighting a few dimensions. Overall, the building height, there's two elevations for building height that's shown on the plans. One is at gray level. And that's 22 feet 4 inches from gray to the top of the roof. And the other is actually more important because it is per our zoning code. Overall, building height is measured from the adjacent top of curb. And the proposed overall height is 22 feet 10 inches. The plates, the first floor plate, so from the first floor finished floor to the ceiling is nine feet. And the second floor plate, again, from the second floor finished floor to the ceiling is eight feet. These two plate heights and the overall building height are consistent with the zoning district and are below what is sort of the maximum for those that are in the R zero zoning district. A few things to highlight during the conversations with the adjacent neighbors. The upper level, this is both on the right side and on the left side, there were discussions with each of the neighbors. And it was agreed upon, the property owner agreed upon frosting the upper windows. So these are high sill windows, the bottom of the window sill to the finished floor is five feet. So these are elevated, you know, upper level windows. And so both the left side windows and the right side windows would be frosted. So this is showing the left side elevation. And this is showing the right side elevation. And then on the backside, there is, as you note from the plans, there is a proposed rear deck that's facing the east side of the property. And through discussions with their neighbors, and I'll have another slide toward the end to show where, but there, there are screening for that patio from, from the right side and also from the left side. Just another summary of the information that's in the project material in the staff report. The roof pitch, you know, for the design is similar to other homes in the neighborhood. The second floor to first floor ratio, which is another item that's identified in the design techniques. You know, the techniques talk about not exceeding 35%. The proposed is at 24.5%. And then I did mention the plate heights. And then just for a point of reference, the two adjacent properties are at 16 feet 10.5 inches in terms of overall height, and the proposed is 22.4. This is just a rendering that's also shown in the staff report packet. And just a summary of the sequence of events, you know, so after the different iterations of applicant and city staff review of the plans, a public notice was provided that occurred in May. And following some of the feedback from the neighbors, the project planner at the time worked with the applicant to update the plans. And following that, during the 15-day appeal period, I'm sorry, then the project plans was approved. And then afterwards, after approval, there's a 15-day appeal period, and then we received two appeals from the neighbor to the left and then also from the one at the corner and number two, and those are shown on the plan. Appeal number one focused on the issues that were concerning for them, which included the scale, the bulk, and the character of the neighborhood. So that's all within the umbrella of neighborhood compatibility. And then also in terms of privacy impact from the first and second story. Other issues that were raised include the garbage service, the parking, and the overall process. As explained in the staff report, some of these issues are not items that can, that are part of this review. So the garbage, I'm sorry, let me just go ahead and summarize appeal number two first before we go into the details. So appeal number two also focused on neighborhood compatibility and then identified something new in terms of the privacy impact from the rear deck. Generally speaking, I wanted to highlight the items about the project that address the privacy impact issues. So the second story addition, which is shown in yellow here, is setback from all of the property lines. And then the rear deck is also setback from the rear property line. So these are increased setbacks than what's required by the zoning code. Additionally, the property owner, the applicant, has agreed to install an eight-foot-tall fence. So that's six feet solid and then two feet lattice on top, and so that would go along the entire side, rear, and just the portion of the side setbacks, the side property lines that are outside of the front setback. And then in addition to that, the rear deck will have a solid wall on the right side. It is screened on the left side by the gable, which is above the great room. So the only side of the deck that would have a three-foot-six railing is along the back. And that has a 33 feet setback from the rear property line. So in summary, these are the dimensions that were shown on the project plans in your packet. Just highlighting the fence height, six feet solid and then two feet lattice above. And then on the left elevation, again, six feet solid, two feet lattice. A portion of, six inches of the windows on the ground floor may be visible above the fence. And then again, the upper level windows are frosted windows. On the right side, same thing, you know, the upper windows are frosted. A portion of the ground floor windows would be screened by the new fence. And then what you see in white, which is probably not, I have another slide that will better illustrate this in terms of the five-foot wall at the rear deck. Did it not? Oh, here we go. Here's the rear elevation. So as you see in the rear elevation with the rear deck, there is a five-foot wall that's shown in blue, that's on the right side. And then what you see also on the plans is that the height, the roof of the great room is above the five foot, and so from the left side, it will screen the rear deck. And just, let me go back to this slide. The applicant during, they'll talk about their conversations with the different neighbors. But one of their conversations is with the neighbor to the rear of the property who supports the project and is comfortable with the rear deck railing at three foot six. So they'll speak to that during their portion of the presentation. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is recommending alternative one to deny their appeals and to uphold the design review approval. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'll now ask for questions from my colleagues, and we're going to start with Commissioner Pine.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I just had a couple questions. First of all, since this was an appeal from a staff-level decision, are there any further appeals passed, passed, past the planning commission, or is our decision tonight final?
The decision tonight is final.
Thank you. And the other question was, so looking at the conditions of approval, we have, we have BP five, which is pertaining to the deck railing minimum five-foot height. We have BP six, which is pertaining to the second floor windows being frosted. I didn't see a condition of approval pertaining to the eight-foot fence. Is there any specific reason why that's not in the conditions of approval, or or is it, like, is it just unnecessary to have that as a condition of approval, or just? My question is, why isn't, why was that not included?
Some, so those original conditions were left over from the original approval. And the fence information is already shown on the plan, so I didn't replicate it. But I'm happy to add it. It's easy enough to add it.
We don't need to add it if it's on the plans. We'll catch it at building permit.
Okay, I just, I just say this because it was, it was always drilled into me that if you want to make 100% sure something happens, you, to put it in the conditions of approval, so, you know, that's just-
We can add it if the commission would like.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm not expressing a, necessarily taking a position on that now. I was just throwing that one out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Next, we have Commissioner Segura.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I looked at the plans, and I'm pretty much supportive of this project. However, I do have a potential recommendation that may help to keep all the neighbors happy as well. So, just a thought and a comment, maybe instead of an eight-foot fence that feels like a big wall, the owner will commit maybe to a six-foot fence with evergreen planting that can go up to 20, 22 feet, or to maintain it at about 18 to 20 feet high. And this way, all the neighbors will have their privacy. Nobody will look to each other's into the house, and it will look more natural than a huge fence. This is only a remark and a recommendation on my end. Rather than that, I do believe that this project should go through. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Segura. Next, we have Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. It was a great presentation. I just want to, I guess, do a little bit of work to understand what our level of discretion is here as, as the planning commission. My understanding is that the appeals specifically relate to, I'm looking at the recommended findings document. The 2.2.3, the design homes to respect their immediate neighbors. There's not, I guess, all the other findings are uncontested, and that the two appeals are specifically saying that the, there's some aspects of this design that are not respectful to the immediate neighbors.
Yes.
Okay. And do we have immediate neighbors defined anywhere in the code? Because this is a cul-de-sac, so it's cul-de-sacs by design are very isolating.
Within the single-family dwelling design techniques, it identifies the neighbors as within 300 feet of the project site.
Okay.
And so the radius map that we included provides that boundary.
Excellent, thank you. That's all my questions for now. I know we have a lot of participation, or a lot of presentations from the public, so I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Alright, seeing no other commissioner hands, I might add a couple questions as well. First question is, you said that the second-story windows, it was agreed upon that it was going to be frosted. Was that voluntary by the applicant?
It was raised by both the neighbor to the right and the neighbor to the left. And so during discussions, I believe through staff, the property owner applicant agreed to frosting the upper level windows.
Okay. Question hypothetical for, for staff. If the applicant didn't want the windows to be frosted, would it still be, would the, would the staff have still recommended approval?
Yes.
Okay, so, to, so then it is the applicant, as I understand it, then the applicant is, there is a concession there. Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Next question, is there a process for neighborhoods to restrict second-story buildings?
Not in this area of the city. I think Sean maybe-
There's a process called a single-story overlay district. It takes a bunch of the homeowners in the area to want to come forward with that, and it's actually a combining district. Some of the Eichler neighborhoods in the city will have those single-story overlay districts.
Okay.
But this one does not.
Okay, so, but there are, there are parts of Sunnyvale where people have chosen homeowners who've come together and said that they want to-
Yeah, like I said, it's typically the Eichlers that are the ones that have that.
Okay, but could this neighborhood otherwise do that if they wanted to?
If they wanted to, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then when there was a question about parking, is there a requirement for when a single-family home increases its size, if bedrooms or what have you, do they have to increase parking?
So, given the project square footage and what they have in terms of overall, they're required to have two, two cars in a garage, and then two uncovered parking spaces in a driveway, which this project provides.
Okay, and then my last question for right now is regarding the fence. Is that something that is also, did the applicant voluntarily do that, or is that something that staff is requiring the eight-foot fence in order to be supported?
Given that the left and right-side neighbors have both identified privacy as a concern, staff typically discusses with applicants different options to address that. So an increased height to eight feet is one option. Additional planting, as you know, one of the commissioners has suggested, is also another option. Sometimes with additional planting, while it does address the need for screening, it may cast a shadow, too much of a shadow into the side setback that either the adjacent neighbor doesn't want, or the property owner, you know, because plants are harder to kind of control with their growth. So in this particular situation, the applicant has discussed it with both the left neighbor and the right neighbor, and both agreed that they're happy with a foot tall. They, the left-side neighbor is here tonight as appellate number one. And then the neighbor to the right is also here and can speak during public comments.
Alright, thank you. And then my, actually, now my last question for you. For the journey of this project, I'm curious, when you'd say that the second story setback on both sides is, it's significantly larger than what's required. Was this project, did it go through an evolution? Was it originally larger? Did it look different? Or is this, is it, and the reason I ask, I'm looking to see if, how the project has evolved to see if it, if there have been concessions made.
If you don't mind, maybe that question can be directed to the applicant because I was not the original project planner, and I don't have that back-and-forth iteration history.
Understood. Alright, thank you so much. Okay, seeing no other commissioner hands, at this point, I'll give a little bit of instruction about how tonight will work. So there are going to be two appellants and one applicant for tonight. Appellants will be called in the order, their appeal letter was received. In the staff report, we have an appeal letter one and appeal letter two, so it'll be referred to as appellate one and appellate two. Each appellate will have 10 minutes at the beginning of the public hearing to address the planning commission. The applicant will then have 10 minutes to address the planning commission. Members of the public not considered an applicant or applicant will then have three minutes each to address the planning commission. Following this, the applicant will have five minutes at the end of the public hearing to provide closing comments. Appellants two and appellants one, in that order, will each have five minutes to share their closing comments afterward as well. And just to set context as well, for the closing comments, that there will not be another opportunity for members of the general public to ask questions. So if you have questions when it's stated for public comment, please take that opportunity. I will go ahead and open, open the public hearing on this specific item. Appellant one, Anan Mohan, you have 10 minutes to present.
Thank you, thank you for this hearing. I'll share my experiences, but I'm really impressed by the questions the commissioners were asking. And you'll see it as I go through why it's coming up, and especially Commissioner Payne regarding it to be documented. All the questions you asked were like exactly the things which I've been struggling to bring forward to. So I am the resident, and I know I missed the first lot, but when I went ahead, I thought, well, the city planning must look at the stuff and do things, you know, my privacy and others, those basic stuff. But when I looked at the details, I found that there was a complete disregard. But I've broken it up into four points based on the legal parameters. I'm not a legal person. This is the first time I've even had to come to a council, even though I work in compliance. And so, but this process has made me learn a lot more about the rules and other stuff. So I'm going to go to the first part. This might give you a better visual of those frosted windows that you were asking about. If the original design had gone through, what you see, those square blobs over there, are where the windows were. And the right side shows you my restroom. And that was something which, when I first came to the city, they said there's no rules regarding privacy. And I'm like, there's the Fourth Amendment, which regards, you know, we have privacy. There's no law which should allow a rest, you know, anyone to build windows directly looking into my restroom. And that initiated the process of like raising the fence and even the frosted windows which you were asking about. Otherwise, this is a glaring example of how things were looking on, on how, how it was. Otherwise, this is a glaring example of how things were looking on how it was. So that's the first agenda item. And I see that part has been fixed with some of these suggestions. But coming back to the questions that were asked, which were very relevant by the commissioners, that was how glaring the whole process was, where the approvers, whoever it was, did not even consider the basic privacy rights of someone's restroom, let alone the balcony and other details. So the good part is that has been addressed because it was so glaring. I think the next aspect, which I can see is, sorry, I should have printed. So, yes, the other aspect is regarding, thank you, I should have. So the other aspect when I started, because that now got me concerned of what the planning commission was doing and started and got me to look into those details of what it was. Now, if you look at all the houses in the neighborhood, there's only one section which has a south-facing roof. And if you look at all the houses in that area, including 180, the only place where solar installation has been done is in the south section, which is part of the roof, which faces my neighbor. And if you look at all the houses, that's the only section of the roof which faces the south. And as per, I put what Google or AI now says, that has 25 to 30% more solar generation than any other place. And the 10% or 9.4, which I'm also questioning whether, if it increases that, I would lose 70 to 80% of my south-facing roof. And I was like, well, I know the rule is it should not be more than 10%. If it were an other area and you're, I'm losing, I'm getting shade for 10%, that's fine. But that is my prime real estate and the effective loss of solar generation is more than 20%. And I was thinking, well, am I the only one who faces that problem? But if you look at the Solar Rights Act, it clearly states that any construction, even though we cannot stop two-story construction, should not affect anyone's ability more than 15 to 20% or more than $1,000 expenses. So if I don't put solar there, and this doesn't mean whether it's existing, it's also in future rights. Oh, good, you have a timer here. Thank you. So I started looking at all these rights. So there's a lot of state laws which prevent that. So 10% shade is fine, but not in the area which would affect more than 15 to 20%. And that too, it's gone to 9.4 and based on buildings, I'm sure we're not going to have NASA people doing it to that exact level inch. The third part, which I'm rushing to right now, is, I know this was brought up in neighborhood. And all the plans, if you look at it, it looks like these three houses are, you know, next to each other. But that is not the case. I have a 60-foot front area. This one has 25, 30-foot, I don't know what it is, but in that range. So I like the presentation done by staff, which says 45%, 30%, but the plot is different. So the basic design element is it should be based on the consideration of actual plot and local conditions. So here, we're applying the general rule as if this is a square plot in an open area. And I'm grateful one of the commissioners did bring it up. This is in a court in a closed area. So a house which has very little front space is being such a given, a huge expansion, which what has been raised. They don't even have enough space for the garbage truck to even pick data in. So this would be a big issue, impact on that if you look at it. And I've tried to put a picture. I mean, this gives you a visual of how big it is. Right now, I think the neighbors before these guys actually said, because the garbage truck number 180 was written in front of my house, he said, I actually own your front area. And I'm like, no, you don't. All plots are square. So that's what made me raise this concern. So yes, I'm glad one of the commissioners did raise that issue regarding the cul-de-sac area. So this is not a normal stage and in the design element, it clearly states you should consider local elements to it. The fourth point, of course, as I know they've said only two complaints, but there were 14 emails filed regarding the size and construction of it. So I've just highlighted all the other complaints that were there. But yeah, I think, I think this group has well-learned it and you've asked those questions. But I wanted to just highlight it and actually give you a visual to the concerns I have. I am on the right-side neighbor. I have five-feet distance across the full length impacted by solar. I know my other friendly neighbors are here who have no solar impact because they're on the other side of it. So I am being affected by this. And as I said, it's affecting California solar rights law, whether for future, which I have been grandfathered in as per local law. Sorry, I've been learning a little bit of terms as I've went through this restroom fiasco because with, you know, I wouldn't know who's looking in that if it's not frosted because the planner did say, well, it's in the room. Can you imagine? I'm sitting here. I don't know whether there's someone on the other side of that window or not in the restroom if any guest comes in. So that's what kind of raised it. Sorry, I'm being pretty straightforward and to the point of the struggle I've had going through this and that's coming up in that. But the good part is the city rules do clearly state that and I don't want to be in a position where I'm facing these issues because of whatever reason it is. And then the solar part, yes, 10% is there, but it's affecting 30%. So the intent has to be looked. It cannot be just 9% there. It's like, you know, is it a murder by cold-blooded murder, sorry for my language, or, you know, by accident? Here, it's like, well, you're losing 9.4% of solar space or shade, which wasn't in the earlier plan properly designed. And I've also listed it how these heights, because it's in a court at the end, it's at a higher plinth which hasn't been provided completely. I know they said they were going to try to provide that. So the net impact, if it's over 10%, but the impact on my solar generation is going to be over 20, 30%. Sorry, this was my full spiel and I've been pretty straightforward. But I do want to thank the questions that were asked that were some of the things which I wanted to, but I feel you guys know that stuff, so I appreciate it. I know I have one minute left, but I'm done.
All right, well, go ahead. If you stay there for a second, because we do have some questions for you. We'll get started by Chair Shukla.
Um, did you, thank you for your concern. Are you on the right side or the left side of the, when you face how it's on the right?
So this is the house I'm on the right side, the one which is straight boundary.
Oh, so did you see the new drawings of the solar, solar, you know, drawings?
It's just a, if you look at the roof, it's the slated side.
Just a second.
Just a point of clarification for orientation purposes. If you're standing at the street looking at the project site, appellate number one is the house to the left.
Oh, in the left.
Yeah, when you're standing at the street looking at the project site, there, appellate number one is...
Yeah.
It's on the left, not on the right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because I, the solar of the, showing the rights.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I just want to say that like you should see the solar study because the, where the sun travels, it probably is not going to block your house. I mean, just, I mean, that's what I understand, I'm understanding.
The map itself shows 9.4%.
The left side is not going to be blocking the house. So that's one. And then second one is that I just want to bring it out. That's like second story. When people look at it, it's very hard to see in somebody's house, like mainly inside. But that's what I've kind of gone and looked at it. But just, these are my, just like, you know, you kind of, if you are up on the, and looking through the window inside the house, it's very hard to see unless you are having a patio there and you are out because it's very difficult to see.
Looking down restroom where the light is on, it's there. And two, if I'm in the restroom, I don't know if I, if you have a camera on or not. It's one of those things where it's perception. If someone gets a heart attack thinking like, oh, someone's looking, even though there's no one there.
I mean, I completely...
But you're right. I did think, I did think in those terms.
Like the restroom is just like, most of the time, most of the restroom has the windows which are frosted or it's more like just for the lights and not for, but anyway, I just don't want to, I just want to...
Restroom habitat, no.
Pick it out the drawings again and maybe see how, because it's far away. And if they put a tree or something, it won't be at all like blocking.
If they do, if they do, no, no, if they do that, I like that idea too. That's why I said I was impressed, you know, I was very skeptical when I started this process and I've explained that. But the questions you guys have asked, every one of them, I'm pretty impressed by the commissioners here.
All right, thank you, Vaishesh Shukla. Next, we have Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. I have some questions about, I guess, the solar shading. So some of this will go more to our city attorney than to you. But I'm looking at the printout and it's saying the maximum of your roof area that's covered is 9.4%.
Yes, yes. So I know it didn't, I tried to look at it. So the way it is, is this is kind of the main roof and this is the south-facing section, as you can see there. And based on their plans after they updated it, it shows 9.4%. But that section which is facing the south, it's 9.4% of 1,300 square foot. But that south section is only 200 or something like that.
Oh, I understand. Sorry.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's 9.4%, but for solar generation, it's the worst 9.4%.
Yes, exactly.
But, okay, so here's where I may be leaning on our city attorney more. Just doing quick Google searches, I'm finding that there are laws for, like restricting the the discretion of HOAs.
Yes.
And I saw something which is not it, which is not an issue here. And I saw something about you can't plant trees that will shade your neighbor and so on. But I don't see anything about remodeling or construction. And so, yes, I'm asking the city attorney for an assist here on what the law is.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're actually correct. I did a similar exercise today to just confirm that all of the laws that have been cited actually do not address the specific situation here. And these are the state laws that the appellant had identified in their presentation. You're correct that the Solar Rights Act is really principally about preventing restrictions on solar voltaic installations by HOAs. But there's also a limitation on public entities from imposing restrictions as well, although public agencies can impose reasonable restrictions. But there's kind of a narrow band of the types of restrictions. So these laws are really to facilitate solar voltaic installations. And there is, one of the state laws is about vegetation, shrubs and trees. So shading a solar installation that exists, but it doesn't apply to buildings and it doesn't apply to the permitting decisions of public agencies. So none of these laws actually apply to this circumstance. I would note that the relevant law here are not these state laws, but it's the municipal code which addresses the shade and shadow analysis that's required. And it does apply to, the 10% threshold is about the entire permitted structure, which would be the roof or an existing solar installation. So if there were an existing solar installation that was being shaded by more than 10%, then that would be an issue under the municipal code. But my understanding is that there is no solar installation on that portion of the roof existing.
Sorry, I know I'm not a lawyer, but on checking it, it does state that it's rights to, whether it's installed or not installed, because I was doing a lot of research through Google. A lot of studies have been done, so it's my rights. Sorry, I'm not going to argue with you.
Yeah. I'm not here to debate these responses from staff. I think this portion of the meeting is really for the commissioners to ask questions of staff and of the appellate number one, but that is kind of a limited portion of this meeting.
Commissioner Davis, do you have any further questions?
Maybe just a little bit of an aside, right? So I'm being very officious here because the planning commission is a quasi-judicial body. We're, we're not, we don't have much discretion. We have to take the laws and apply them and as staff and as the city's legal staff interprets it for us, we have to run with them and so on. And we do actually get training in how to do that. So I'm just trying to clear things up as matters of fact, but that's all my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Davis. And Mr. Mohan, thank you so much for your presentation. We don't have any other Commissioner questions at this time. You will have five minutes again at the end for any closing comments. We'll now proceed with appellate two, which is, forgive me if I miss the pronounce the name, Sungang Shonko.
Shon, yes.
Shon, and you have a 10 minutes present as well.
Can I ask to use the laptop in front instead of?
So the thing is, we need you to speak into the mic so that folks that are...
Yes, the... Okay. I thought you will be more efficient. I have, I have prepared. The reason is the, it is very difficult to present the information that I prepared looking at desk screen and presenting in front of you. And, but I felt that the planner have a much easier time presenting the data in front of the laptop, whether that opportunity can be given to me that I'm asking.
I'm afraid we can't accommodate that, however, we can note that it was requested.
Yes. Can I use that laptop?
No, you have to stand up at the podium.
Okay.
My laptop is not synced in, so it doesn't, we can't do it. We can't.
No, it's interesting.
Yeah.
It is fair to ask and unfortunately, we can't accommodate it, but thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, I'll go ahead. My name is Shonko. I'm the second appellant. And I'll read through. The current side plan for 180 donor court does not have the required combined side yard setback per SMC Section 192330. The lot width used in this current combined setback calculation is incorrect. Why? Lot width should be calculated as the average mean distance between the sideline line for non-rectangular lot or the distance between the sideline line at the midpoint of the lot depths. The current calculation used the sideline distance at the required minimum front setback 20 feet, which is incorrect. Current definition of a lot width in the SMC does not specifically address the calculation of the lots or irregular shapes. Lot width measured at the front setback result in prejudice consequence to those irregularly shaped lots having long lots frontage and does not reflect the intent of the SMC drafters. And it will provoke unnecessary dispute among surveyor homeowners, which is not necessary. Even if you're using the incorrect lot width, the combined setback falls short of the required rounded yardage. Even if you're using the incorrect combined setback calculation, the combined side setback falls short of the required minimum lot width per Table 193020. The projected shadow area on the roof, it will exceed 10% of the threshold as required by the municipal code. The current shadow analysis is defective. The reason is it does not consider the grading effect. They consider two buildings have equal grading, but that is not the true. If you consider the fact, the grading of entire lot as well as the required grading at the front lot and the grading between adjacent lots, the projected shadow area will exceed 10% threshold. The scale, work and character of the proposed two-story building rages significant concerns among the neighborhood. This is the first two-story home design in past 25-plus years in this area. There is no existing second-floor deck in the entire neighborhood. There exists significant privacy threat to the neighborhood last year. There has been insufficient mitigation efforts so far in response to the neighborhood's concern. And I'm going to contrast this to the mitigation efforts implemented on a similar case. Having said that, the project site is described over here has a narrow frontage. Rear is very large and they have a non-parallel... Rear is very large and they have non-per视线lot lines. This is irregular lot and this is interior lot. And the current applicant used lot width measured at the twenty-foot setback from the required front yard. And then their calculation is fifty-three feet and something. And based on that, the combined side last setback calculation is twenty percent of fifty-three foot and eight inches, resulting in ten foot, nine inch. And they have provided ten foot, eleven inches. They provided two-inch margins. I challenge these findings. The reason is it violates Sunnyvale Code. The reason is, if you look at Sunnyvale Code, it says, when calculating setbacks as a percentage of lot width, the resulting setback shall be rounded to the nearest foot. So if I rounded to the nearest foot for the calculated value, it should be eleven foot. However, the provided lot is ten eleven, which is short. It's the violation of Sunnyvale Municipal Code. Sunnyvale Municipal Code defines a lot width as a distance between side lot lines for the case of the interior lot. And rest of the case description belongs to the corner lot. Having said that, other than the definition in nineteen twelve one thirty, SMC does not specifically provide the details of calculating lot width, particularly for those lots that are not in rectangular shape. The current combined side yard setback calculation appears to use distance between the side lot lines at the minimum front setback. Lot width measured at the front setback resulting prejudice the consequence to those irregularly shaped lots having long lot frontage. Lot width calculation should consider the different lot shapes. And currently used front setback method does not reflect the intent of SMC drafters. And the currently used front setback method will provoke unnecessary disputes among Sunnyvale homeowners. Having said that, I can provide one example. There are four lots, lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four, all has equal lot area. However, lot three, lot four has different frontage width. Lot three has seventy feet width frontage. And then lot four has fifty. As a result, the calculated required side yard setback for lot three is fourteen feet, while lot four is ten feet. As a result, buildable lot area shrinks for lot three to twenty-seven sixty square feet, while lot four has increased buildable lot area of three thousand. The difference is two hundred four square foot, which is very big. That means current interpretation of the applicant favors lot four at the expense of lot four in terms of the required side yard setback. This is not fair. If so, what is the remedies? Other communities use mean average lot width approach as shown over here. The way they calculate the lot width is the mean horizontal distance between side lot lines. And other way is the midpoint of lot depths approach as shown over here. Lot width is the horizontal distance between the side lot lines measured at the right angles to the lot depths at the midpoint between the front and rear lot. And lot depths can be defined accordingly. Anyway, here, lot depths takes the mean or average. That is the normal approach. If you apply this method, last three, lot four has lot width of fairly equal to sixty foot. As a result, after rounding, side yard setback required, the footage become twelve and twelve. As a result, buildable lot area become all equal. This is a fair equal treatment of the lot regardless of the shape. And current way of determining the setback requirements for side, side lot is wrong. And this is hurting the property values of the irregularly shaped lot with long frontage. Other Bay Area communities like Mepitas and Los Artos has a similar municipal code or code of ordinances conforming to my assertion. I may not have enough time, but here I have to present. Regarding the front elevation, current grade versus the curb has six inch separation. And this is the analysis presented by applicant having nine point four percent roof area shade according to the analysis. However, this analysis is flawed. Why? The proposed structure should be drawn on top of the correctly elevated grading. If you provide the effect of the grading difference between lots, the calculated projected shadow area exceeds more than ten percent, which is against Sunnyvale Municipal Code.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead. If you stay there for a moment, I'm going to see if commissioners have any questions. All right, Commissioner Davis.
I, I didn't quite catch why you said this is an interior lot and not a cul-de-sac lot.
Before I go to, go to that part, could you point out which page you're referring it?
Well, so we have different lot requirements on whether it's an interior lot or cul-de-sac lot. So if I understood this.
Yes, my understanding is if you look at the shape of the lot in the county provided lot diagram, okay, here.
I mean, Donner Court is a cul-de-sac.
One eighty Donner Court is on the cul-de-sac. The lot frontage for support is straight. And then they curved slightly. Straight section is larger than curved section. And on top of that, it has straight side lot lines, straight rear lot lines. So based on that, I would say this is an interior lot. And applying the rule of the cul-de-sac may not be valid. And the reason I was mentioning is the calculated front lot width by the applicant is fifty-four foot. But according to the Sunnyvale Municipal Code, required lot width at the front yard setback is, in my memory, fifty-seven feet. So that doesn't satisfy. That's what I mean. But besides this, what I want to say is this. This lot has ten thousand two hundred.
One second.
Yes.
Did you have more questions?
Yeah, I, I wanted some clarification from city staff because that's, that's a non-intuitive interpretation of the difference between, or to me at least, a non-intuitive interpretation of the difference between cul-de-sac and interior. I look at Donner Court and I see a cul-de-sac. I see a curve on their frontage. So they only have, what, forty-two point, forty-two and a half feet of, of street frontage. These are, these, this is what happens on cul-de-sacs, right? So.
That's for city staff, yes?
Yes.
If I may, I don't know if it's possible to pull up a municipal code definition. But just, just for, for the record, the lot width is defined in the municipal code. And for lot width, hold on a second, let me just read it verbatim. So it's section nineteen. I'm sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. So it is a cul-de-sac and but it is, for setback purposes, it's still an, it's an interior lot for setback purposes.
For setback purposes.
Yes. And so it is subject to combined setback, which then relies upon the lot width. And I, I was answering the question mentally in my head more sequentially, but I think you were asking it in reverse order. So it's okay.
That's fair. That's fair. Yeah, I guess this is more for staff than the appellant. So I'm looking at, in the code, I'm looking at table nineteen dash three zero dash zero two zero.
Yes.
So as, so this is R zero. So the lot width at the minimum front yard setback, which is twenty feet, right, for R zero, has to be fifty-seven feet.
Yes.
But this is about the, the, the lot, right? Whether or not the lot complies or not. And I suspect that this was, this was plotted, this was plotted out before the code was complete. So it'd be grandfathered in. So I don't really. So then I guess what would govern it then would be what our setback requirements are for the construction, which is what, like, yeah, so, which is like ten feet, right, total or something?
Yes.
Four feet on one side.
Correct.
So I, I didn't see any measurements on any of the drawings we got. It is compliant.
There are measurements on the part.
I'm so sorry. This is between the commissioner and the staff right now.
Yeah, so in the, in the drawings that was in the planning commissioner's packet.
So in, on sheet AS one, AS dash one, the site plan, the dimensions are shown.
Okay.
And just, it is also in my slide presentation, highlight it in yellow just to, if it's possible to pull up my presentation again. If you can go to slide number sixteen of my presentation.
Oh, okay, I see.
Oh. I'm sorry. Can you go? I'm looking for this one, sorry.
Oh, okay, okay. I just glanced over this. Okay, so.
So if you're note, the, the dimensions that are shown in purple are the setbacks for the first floor. And then those that are shown in yellow are the setbacks for the second floor.
Okay, so. Okay, so, so we have ten foot, eleven inches of total. And that meets the sta, and that meets the standard.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Next, we have commissioners running.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify. So your concern ultimately is the same as the first appellate's concern, the shadow on the house?
No, my major concern is the satisfying the setback requirement. First, provided setback is less than required. It should be rounded to eleven feet. But the provided setback is eleven foot and, oh, a ten foot and eleven inches, which doesn't satisfy the requirement, eleven foot after rounding. And second thing is the definition of the lot width according to the Sunnyvale Municipal Code. It should be clarified. If you provide the method used by the current applicant, you will provide damages to lots which has a wide frontage. That is not fair and that is not the intent of the municipal code. And you will invite unnecessary disputes.
And where is your house?
My house? Could you go to the slide? Could you go to the slice? Yes, my house is located, I cannot point. Yes.
Number twenty-eight.
And it has wide frontage. And if you provide the way lot width has been calculated by the applicant, it will damage the value of my property. Why? Buildable lot area will shrink. That is not fair.
I'm sorry, which house is yours?
Number twenty-eight.
Number twenty-eight, yes. And could you look at in the diagram, number thirty-two?
This is, all right, so the setback is not immediately affecting your property, but you're saying in principle because of the way it's calculated.
Because Sunnyvale Municipal Code should, should apply it for all R zero lots, not mine. Every R zero lot. It should be applied equally and uniformly. They take advantage of reduced setback by using incorrect lot width.
This is the commissioner's time.
Okay.
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 I don't understand.
All right. Thank you.
No further questions?
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Pine.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions to staff prompted by the appellant's presentation. Number one, is staff applying the setback requirements consistent with, as they would for any similarly situated lot in, in the city?
Yes, that's correct. We've measured twenty feet back and then that dimension across.
Thank you. I will, I should probably save this for later, but I would observe that any alteration of the code to clarify or change the application or change would be appropriately of, would, is something that the planning commission could consider via the study issue process, but would not be appropriate, an appropriate thing to consider tonight as it is essentially a policy ques, as it's a policy question. My second question to staff. Appellant raised an issue about making sure that grading was properly evaluated in the, in the shadow study. I don't, I guess my question is, what information do we have on this? Because the shadow sheet I have before us, I mean, looking at this, I cannot tell you if there was, what kind of grading analysis was applied. I just don't, I don't think I can tell from the sheet I have in front of me.
So the applicant, it wasn't, it was not included in the packet. It's not typically a seminal requirement, but the applicant of their own volition had the property surveyed. And so the elevation points and the, the shadow study that they had conducted, which is part of the attachment number five, was used, you know, was using the dimensions for the proposed building. And so the great elevation, what, what's probably difficult for you to follow, you know, the, the math is not, we typically don't show the math.
And because we're also, and also because we're using, we're using a two-dimensional plot of what are three-dimensional triangles.
Correct. So it's a little bit harder to see. I think with it, for shadow studies, it's a little bit harder to show the math of how the shadow is casting. It's three D. Things are at an angle. I did ask the applicant to do a bit more work. So they did, you know, right before the meeting, printout, you know, sort of trying to show the math of how they did it. You know, so that if you just had a ruler and an angle thing, you might be able to follow it. Staff uses an application to calculate area and, and things. So it's a little bit different. But what they did was basically use the city's handout for doing the solar analysis. And they're showing through this exhibit, the AM and PM angles that they, again, were following the handout.
Yeah, yeah. I, I follow the, like, I follow the process and like, I, this is.
So the, the building height is not, it, it's taken at the front of the property. It, you know, if the property slopes up, slopes down, it's taken from the front, you know, the building height measurement, which is defined in our code.
So we'd be properly capturing this. So if we, if we submit for sake of this arguendo that, that the property on the left is maybe slight, is just graded slightly lower than the property that under construction, like, can I be confident that the, all the elevations and stuff? can I be confident that the, all the elevations and stuff are correct? And we're not pretending that the property on the right is like a foot higher than it actually is? Especially the property on the left is like a foot higher than it actually is?
My understanding from talking to the appellant is that the property slopes a little bit. But regardless, the, regardless of how it slopes toward the back of the property, the height that we use for measurement purposes is actually taken at the front. So even if it slopes up, the grade stays the same. Your house, this house that's being proposed has the same finished floor elevation as the existing house. And so the height is measured using that elevation at the front of the property.
Okay, I, sorry, I, I track this, I'm just making sure we're tracking the roof heights on the, not on the property being built, but on the property being left. Because I can see it, especially when we're talking about nine point four percent, I can see it making a difference if we have the height of the neighboring roof slightly off.
I don't have the survey pulled up. Do you mind if the applicant, through their designer, maybe can verify that?
Answers it, but I do think this is, but just, I, and I mean, I'm, I'm very, I would be very happy if somebody tells me that it's fine. But like, I do think that's a fairly material issue and I would like to see it addressed. Because just, I will say when I, I will say I did walk by the property over the weekend and I do, did note that there is a very slight slope. It's not large, but it's noticeable. So I just, yeah, I just wanted to flag that. To, to appellant, I see you waving your hand. I will note however, that you will have five minutes after, after the applicant's comment to come back to make any comments that you will have five minutes that are entirely within your discretion. So I do not have any specific questions for you at this time, but again, you're free to respond in your, in your five minutes later. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Pine, seeing no other commissioner hands. Thank you so much for your presentation. At this point, we will proceed with applicant, you will have ten minutes to present.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for giving us this time. I'm Karthik, that's my wife Harini. We are the homeowners of the house at one eighty Donner Court. We also have our designer, Vani, who will be joining me for the presentation. So before I delve into the particulars of the project, what I wanted to do is just maybe take, like, just a brief minute to talk a little bit about our Sunnyvale story. So I came to Sunnyvale, or I came to the US rather seventeen years ago to pursue my graduate studies at Stanford. Back then, I had a cousin who used to live in Sunnyvale, so he was the one who picked me up at the airport. And I spent my very first night in this country, in this very zip code, in nine four zero eight six. Over the years, I became a resident of Sunnyvale, I met my future wife Harini, I, we got engaged here. And then after we got married, Harini also moved from Folsom to Sunnyvale and has been a resident here since then. Back in twenty seventeen is when we bought the current house, one eighty Donner Court. And we really stretched ourselves financially to get into the Sunnyvale home market and, and buy this home. Even when we bought it, we could clearly see that it was a home in need of a certain, like, long-term repairs and renovations. But we thought that at some point in the future, when we were financially a bit more stable, we would invest in the house to remodel it or rebuild it to better suit our family's needs, which, which now also includes our son, who was born in twenty twenty one. The last couple of years, so Harini and I also had to cope with the loss of a parent. So because of this, one of the things that's top of mind for us is taking care of our aging and now widowed parents. So one of the things we are thinking about for the future is that both of our parents will move in with us. So we'll be living, living under the same roof. So that's been top of mind for us as we consider the rebuilding of our home. So since last year, we started working with Vani to design, design our new home. We submitted our initial, the very first submission to the city was back in November. Since then, we made several revisions and iterations based on all the helpful feedback and guidance we got from the city staff. And then finally, in the May of this year is when we got the final approval on the project. So like I mentioned, we are designing this as a multi-generational home that's not only accommodating us, but also our parents. So that's why we have four bedrooms on the first floor, one for the two of us, one for our son, and then two bedrooms, like, one each for, for our parents. We do have two office rooms on the second floor, because both for Harini and me, we work in predominantly remote, remote working jobs. So we work, work out of our home. And then we have a family room on the second floor, just so that our, our son can be on the same level as us when, when we are working and he's at home. We also did seriously consider trying to make this just a single, a single-story plan. But we are really serious avid home gardeners, as you can see from the pictures there. And so vertical expansion was the only option if we wanted to save yard space for home gardening. We also kept the neighborhood in mind right from the get-go. So we wanted to make sure that what we are building is something that's not completely out of the norm for the neighborhood. So we did do a survey of the neighborhood and found that the, the neighborhood does actually have quite a few single-story homes. So these are the ones that you see marked in the dark blue color on the map. The, the house in pink is, is Appellant Two, Appellant Two's home. And furthermore, as we were talking about our projects to our neighbors, we found that a lot of them also have expressed an interest in potentially considering, considering this themselves. So many of our immediate neighbors are potentially considering a second-floor re-addition in the future, including our neighbor to the left, Appellant One. So Mr. Mohan and I have also discussed about it. He's also potentially considering something like this in the future, which is why some of his objections around the solar study were a bit puzzling to me. One, because we've talked about this project for a while, and this is, today is the first time I heard about it. And second, because once he builds his second-story addition, his solar panels will go on top of the second floor, the second floor roof. And so any shadow we cast would be on his walls and not on his panels. We know that the, the proposal of a deck addition is also, could be a potential point of concern. But what I would like to note is that the city has already approved a similar project on a house with a, which is also having a second-floor addition within three hundred feet of us. So I think this, this house on one fifty Matadero Drive got the approval back in twenty twenty-three. They haven't quite gotten into construction phase yet due to some personal delays. But the fact still remains that there is precedence for it in the neighborhood. And we are clearly not breaking, breaking any new ground. Precedence from the neighborhood aside, we also wanted to be sure that we do talk to our neighbors about any concerns they may have. And all the neighbors in our immediate vicinity have had no objections to the deck. They've complimented us on some of the privacy-preserving features we've built, like the, the, the privacy side, the privacy walls, the generous setbacks, as well as ample of screening vegetation that we're planning in the yard. In fact, the, the backside neighbor, the person who should be the most impacted and be the most concerned by our deck addition, is actually one of our most vocal and strongest supporters. So he's claimed in his mail to the city that he has no objections and the adjacent neighbors to him have no objections to our deck either. And we've generally seen pretty broad support for the project from across the neighborhood, which we are extremely thankful for. Many of them have joined us here in person over Zoom. And actually, I think we got about a dozen of those neighbors who also wrote letters of support to the city in support of the project. I picked up a few verbatim quotes from the, from the neighbors in the most immediate vicinity. So these are all neighbors in our cul-de-sac or, or neighbors who share a boundary with us. I guess in the interest of time, I won't go through each of those, but we can come back to this slide if needed. The last thing I'll mention is that as part of our neighborhood outreach, we've also tried to listen to our neighbors and incorporated several of their comments and feedbacks into our design. A specific example I would like to call out is working with Appellant One to make sure that we could address their privacy concerns by frosting all of our second-floor windows, as well as second-floor windows that look into their side, as well as raising the fence height by adding a two-feet lattice. And similarly, we've spoken to a lot of other neighbors and tried to reach compromises where we could. I'll hand it over to Vani to wrap things up.
Thanks, Karthik. Have I got forward this? Okay, thanks. So adding to Karthik's Sunnyvale story, my very first project was also in Sunnyvale in two thousand and four, that was twenty-one years ago. And it was a two-story addition, two eight five zero square feet on Metal Drive, and it's still owned by the same family for whom we designed it. Over the years, we have designed multiple two-story homes in Sunnyvale in various configurations, two-story main dwelling. Our latest one is on Parkington Avenue, where we are pulling building permits as we speak. Two-story with main dwelling on first floor, ADU on second floor. Two-story main dwelling split on two levels and an ADU. I will not go in the details of the, how we have complied with all the city guidelines, design guidelines, because Julia has already demonstrated that. But I would like to say that because it was a larger lot, we, we could have deeper setbacks, the amassing of the building. I know one of the commissioners had a question in the beginning for whether it went through an evolution. Yes, it did. Our first submittal to planning was, the bulk was at the back, at the rear. Then when we started looking at the deeper setbacks, we moved the bulk to the front, because these are two office rooms. And so we removed the bulk from the back completely. And that also gave me an opportunity to make deeper setbacks on left-hand side as well as on right-hand side. Right-hand side was not that much of a challenge, because the property takes that shape. So deeper setbacks came naturally. But left-hand side, we were able to achieve much deeper setbacks there. As the, as the appeals were coming, we were working with the homeowners. And homeowners were very open to accommodating all the neighbors' concerns. Even though I was not very happy with frosting the left-hand side, and I'll tell you why, because we meet the code there, in the bedroom, the windows are high sue windows, five feet above. And the other three windows are in the staircase. So, but in any case, we have now frosted all the windows. Then for Appellant Two, their concern is that nineteen fifty's homes in the neighborhood, which are single-story, so they do not like to see the two-story. But again, again, city allows second floor and seventy years later. Ownership has changed, the, the family's needs have changed, and we are well within the city guidelines, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you so much for your presentation. And now we're going to go to commissioner questions.
Yes.
Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, thank you. Question for the, you can probably guess what this question is going to be, but can you, can you describe the process in which you, behind the presented solar study as consistent with municipal code nineteen fifty-six zero twenty B one?
So the, the, we're not clear on the grading, because we did do a survey on the property, even though it is not required by the planning department. And the serve, the site, and we can make this available. It was, it's a proper survey done by licensed surveyor. So the Donner Court Road is at one oh two point one nine. And then the site slopes up to one oh three point four. And then later, in the middle or somewhere towards the middle of the building, proposed building, it becomes one oh four. So the curve is at one oh two and one oh three. So that doesn't change.
Right, and, and this was taken into account when calculating the roof heights for the solar study?
We didn't have to, because we calculate at the front of the building, and that's at the curve. So that is same for both the properties.
I'm just, I'm basically just asking whether the roof heights in both buildings for the solar study are basically consistent with what I would actually find if I went there with like a laser, with like a survey equipment and was like, here, and like, actually, like, I know how to, I'm not a professional surveyor, but like, just the survey, like, was blessed by the survey ferry and was like, this is the actual roof height with, you know, one hundred percent precision?
So we'll have to get the survey done for the adjoining property to have absolute accurate, because it's a, there's no basis for it. Without a survey, we cannot for sure say that there is a six inches difference that they're claiming. But if you look at the road elevation, site elevation, and then going forward, that seems to be consistent.
Okay, staff, yeah.
So it is not typical to survey adjacent properties.
I figured that, that felt like it would be kind of unreasonable.
Yeah, so for, for building height purposes, we measure overall height from the top of adjacent curb. And so as the applicant was saying, they measure through the survey that the curb in front of the adjacent neighbor's property. And so that's shown on their survey.
Okay.
So that is factored into the measurement of building height, both on the applicant's property and the measurement for building height on the adjacent property.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, you don't have the survey, so you can't tell.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Expecting applicants staff to survey their neighbors' properties, I imagine that would be very annoying to the neighbors.
But I, I do have it, it just.
Well, yeah, no, I, as long as it's all been factored in and as long as we're, this is consistent with how we're, we do things and it's consistent with the municipal code, I'm, I'm fine. I just, I just really wanted to hammer this down, because I didn't, I don't want somebody being able to, because, you know, I don't want somebody being, because I have to make the finding that this is under ten percent, that this is under ten percent. Because if I was not able to make the finding that this is actually under ten percent, then obviously, then I would have to, I'd be moved, I'd have to move for a continuance to bring back a nineteen fifty-six zero twenty B two solar study. And I think that would, and if I don't have to do that, I don't want to do that, because I think that will be very annoying for everybody.
Yeah, I, I think that's what the applicant's designer was trying to say is, with the survey, they used information from the survey too.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I have no more questions on this point for now, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Pine, seeing no other commissioner hands.
Sorry, I remembered I had one more question, it's completely unrelated to the solar study. This one's actually a question for staff. Regarding preservation of the Japanese maple tree, is that something we can just kind of assume from the site plans? Or is that something else you might want to think about a condition of approval for?
I, I think it's already reflected on the site plan, and I'm happy to add a condition if that is helpful.
Yeah, I'm all for not adding tons of extra conditions of approval, I just want to make sure it's, it's captured.
It's captured.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pine, seeing no other commissioner questions. You're welcome to take a seat. At this point, we're going to open this for the public comment. So for those that are not an appellant or a applicant, you have an opportunity to share your, your comment, your comments and your questions. You'll have three minutes. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer, raise your digital hand now, or dial star nine on the telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Again, you'll have three minutes. And also just to set a little bit of ground rules, the way this works is you'll have a chance to, really, you're, you're presenting your point of view. But it's not your opportunity to ask questions of applicants, of appellants, of the city, of commissioners. This is really you stating your, your, your opinion, to just to set that expectation. Okay, so we do have several, I've got two speaker cards. First person have up, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, is Ali Semen?
Yes. Can you hear me? I am the property owner at one eighty-six Donner Court, which, as explained, I'll be on the right-hand side. And the one eighty Donner Court property owner did talk to me, and I have no objection to the building permit. As a matter of fact, I'm planning to do something similar in the future. And I'm assuming the city have gone over the requirement and assessed all of that. And I believe what they did is the right thing, so. And that's all what I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right, and next is from Don Hofman.
Yes, I'm Dan Hafeman, I'm on the BPAC Commission, but I'm speaking for myself tonight. And we live at one nine eight Donner Court, which is on the opposite side of the cul-de-sac. We can see the property from our bedroom window and our kitchen window. We've looked at the plans, we, we've talked to the applicant. We've looked at the plans, we, we've talked to the applicants. We have no problems with this project. And we know some people who live on Carson who are affected by this project. And they don't have a problem either. So we're kind of in favor of moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That is the extent of speaker cards I have for in-person. Before we move to remote speakers, would anyone else, who isn't again, an applicant or applicant, like to speak? Okay, remote speakers are warned to limit their comments. Yes. So I'm, yes.
If you allow me, I will talk, if not, it's okay.
Okay, just one second, and I've got a question for the city attorney. I don't know, but if it, I'm not sure if they're part of the appellant or not. Are you living a neighbor or what?
I'm living in the circle. No. No, I have my opinion.
Okay.
Fill out a speaker card.
Correct, so you're not rushed to fill out your speaker card. While the speaker card is being filled out, we will move to remote speakers. Remote speakers are warned to limit their comments to the gen item being considered. Speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. According to, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, we do. We have one hand raised from Gordon, I'll allow Gordon the floor to speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I, my wife and I live on nine twenty Carson. We are the family behind the fence. We were fully supportive of the project. We are the one who referenced the elm tree. We own the home now, we're going on five years. Thrilled that we have another family in the neighborhood with young kids, and we want to see them grow their family here, we're very supportive. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. And perhaps, do we have any of the other folks online wishing to speak?
Yes, we do, we have one hand raised from Wei, I'll allow Wei the floor to speak now. Wei, you're unmuted.
We can't hear anything if you're speaking.
Oh, sorry, hi, my name's Wayley, I'm the owner of one fifty-nine Peter Drive and in the neighborhood. I'm supporting of, of the point that Mr. Shang Ko brought up. And I do have a concern of like the way the, the lot with this, this calculus is defined or interpreted from the Sunnyvale Municipal Code. And I, I'm, I agree with the, but the, the point that Mr. Shang Ko brought up. So I would urge the commissioners to consider this, this valid point. In, I understand like the staff has, has like mentioned that they apply similar approach in the other lots, but then I, yeah, I support Mr. Shang Ko's point.
Thank you, and Chair, we have no further hands raised.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now for Diane Wu, it is your turn, you have three minutes.
Well, thank you, committee, for giving me this opportunity. I just want to express my idea as a Sunnyvale residents. And I think for the Sunnyvale community, we have a harmony community. We have a fair, equal opportunity for every resident and make everybody happy here and become a lovely city. I believe we need to be fair and equal to treat everyone so that we become a city not to let people have a dispute or very, very much uncomfortable situation. So I feel we have to follow the code. What I see is especially irregular shape, if we don't count in the middle, we count only in the front. This is enough, not equal, because some lot front is narrow, some type lot front is wide. Then the, the wide front lot may be not able to build something even. So I feel then the, the problem is if people doesn't not know by the some property and later on they find out it's not what they can build, and they'll be very disappointed. It's not good for, good for the city business. And I think the, the, the house value, the lot value could be dropped. That if everybody not aware of that, the house with front wide maybe drop three hundred K right away. So I think that's really damaging for our city. So I believe from the code drafter, I believe there should be doing equal as much as fair as possible for the all citizens, because every residence, we, we are, we should be very close-knit community and rather than fight with each other, right? So that's, that's my, my belief, and I believe the intent from legal point of view, for any point of view, they, that's what they want. Nobody want chaos, right? So from my point, I feel as long as, you know, committee make I think it's common sense because I look at others, I have a friend who is architect, and he built house everywhere. So I asked him this question. So he said in general, it's going through the middle of the lot, every city is like that. And what I said, if I have this lot, I try to buy this lot instead of buy that kind of lot. Maybe I take advantage. He said, you can try, but you may not go through it with the city. So that's the advice from my architect. So I just want to present the what I know and for the, for the neighbor piece, we need to consider everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. At this point, the applicant, the appellant, both appellants will have five minutes to each provide closing comments. So the order is going to be applicant, and then we'll do appellant two, which is Mr. Ko. And then we'll do appellate one, Mr. Mohan. So, but the applicant is going to be first. And you have five minutes. And please, it's, it's applicant, and to be clear, just to set expectations as well, this is your time to give an argument. This isn't really an opportunity for you to ask questions of anyone, this is just your point of view.
Okay, I just have gratitude and thanks to all the commissioners, the vice, the chair, vice chair, and the city planners and our adorable neighbors, pretty much ninety percent of the neighbors have supported our project. Thanks for their, thanks, thanks for their support. And for all of your due diligence and your patience throughout this process. Especially grateful, by way of introduction, I'm Harini Jambonathan. I work as the data scientist with the state of California. Currently serving at the inter-agency council on homelessness, where we focus on solving some of our most pressing housing and social equity challenges across the state. As a resident and homeowner, I deeply appreciate how progressive and thoughtful the city of Sunnyvale has been in supporting A D U's multi-generational homes, one of, us being one of them, and sustainable infill development that allows families to stay together and communities to thrive. A project reflects that same point, that same spirit. We have worked carefully to stay within the city's guidelines, minimize impacts, and contribute positively to our neighborhood. As you might be able to read through all of our fifteen letters, support letters from our, from our three hundred feet radius neighbors. So we respectfully ask for your support in upholding the city's approval. And thank you again for your service and attention to this matter, really thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, next is going to be appellate two, that's Mr. Ko, you have five minutes to share.
If you look at the neighboring lots, appellant number one has a six thousand foot lot. The required setback is twelve feet. On the other hand, applicant's lot is over ten thousand two hundred. Provided setback is less than eleven feet. This doesn't provide the fact that larger lot is providing less setback, that is not fair. And plus, existing plot, existing plan has setback which is very large and proposed setback reduced the amount maybe five to six foot. You have to look at, how is it possible to reduce the setback from fifteen or sixteen foot to less than eleven feet? That is not fair. You have to look into it. There could be a potential code violation, which is not very good for the prospective home builder. If there is a code violation, they have to mitigate it later on, which we consider. And secondly, the provided setback clearly violates the required setback. If you have to provide a rounding, it is eleven foot. But the provided setback is less than that, so you have to take into the consideration. If commission make a decision to go ahead, you are making a dispute among Sunnyvale residents. Those lots with wide frontage will have stringent requirement to provide more side yard setback. On the other hand, some of the cul-de-sac homeowners, which has a narrow frontage, they will take advantage of reduce the setback. That is not fair. That affects the value of the home, and that is not the intent of the code drafter. And it will present unnecessary dispute. And I believe we have the power to prevent that. And regarding the solar study, north side is always higher because of the slope which is being generated. Two-story building is on the south side, so this is higher because of the straight gradient. There is a requirement for drainage gradient. If you provided that minimum point five percent drainage slope, the difference in a lot is around the point three feet. That generates additional sixteen square feet of the shadow coverage. That clearly is over the tw- a ten percent threshold. On top of that, the drainage along the sidewalk, ah, no, 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 driveway, they provided only six inches. They propose five percent grading. If you provide five percent grading over twenty feet, it is one foot. Somehow they reduced, reduced the height by half foot. The reason is, if you add point five, point five foot, the added shadow area in my calculation is twenty-seven square feet. And then that, that provides definitely above ten percent threshold. What I'm saying is, there is a potential code violation which has been overlooked, and we have to mitigate it. And I'm presenting those issues. And regarding the mitigation effort from the similar cases, there is an appeal of a P C hearing, file number twenty-two zero six seventeen. Committee hearing was held on seven eleven, twenty twenty-two. According to the report to the planning commission, the applicant in that particular case worked with the staff to eliminate the second floor balcony, reduce the size of the second floor, reduce the wall plate height, and provide the additional second floor setbacks beyond the code minimum. An applicant also provided the line of sight drawings to show how potential views into neighboring properties are minimized. In my opinion, mitigation effort has not been sufficient. So I respectfully request the commission grant the appeal and reject the design review, which has flaws. It will present multiple code violation, setback violation, plus solar access violation. And some of the efforts, as I mentioned, the privacy, size of the building, these all violates the design guidelines, guidelines presented by the Sunnyvale. Okay, I think that with the end of my conversation, I really appreciate your time hearing my arguments, and I look forward to hearing your deliberation.
Thank you very much. All right, and the last one we have is appellate number one. Mr. Mohan, you have five minutes for your closing arguments.
Thank you. I would love to not have been the northern neighbor, and I would have approved everything because it doesn't affect me directly, because right now, all these discussions which are happening, I'm the only one who's affected. I know the backdoor neighbor said I don't care for privacy, but just look at it, I'm sitting, standing here in a balcony. If I look this way, my yard is visible. So by you sir saying, I, I'm, yeah, I'm okay at looking at you, doesn't stop me from looking at others. That's how I look at it, because I'm the one who's affected by it irrespective of whether, and as I said, I started this process not knowing anything. For me, as a layman, I was shocked that how can someone build? And I think the architect kind of said she wasn't happy with it. But I clearly said, even to Julia, that I'll go to the press and say Sunnyvale allows peeping tom windows into my restroom. If that's what I have to do, as I said, this has been a learning process for me. I do work in compliance and work with lawyers, so if I have to run a movement or run a vote campaign or start an NGO, but I don't think anywhere, and normal people would allow someone to build a window directly peeping into my restroom irrespective, that's just me as a layman, and I'm saying this because I know these were, so that's how the whole process started. And during this course, what I heard was, well, we've not done the gradient analysis. And that's why Vani has clearly said nine point four percent and half a feet more because water flows from the court downwards at a very fast pace because it clogs in front of mine and I have to remove the leaves. So half foot more, it's over ten percent, I don't know who's enforcing this. So that changes that, but I feel, I'm surprised how the commission feels. You know, we're okay with something done in nineteen fifty-six. If you have to do a survey, as long as it violates my right, as I said, I'm the one who's being affected here. I'm surprised a lot of personal issues were brought up. I come here as a property owner. I have not mentioned that my retired dad is living here, you know, and those personal issues of who I'm married to, what has happened, my personal life, or how my dog died. I'm not getting into that. I come here clearly as a property owner and do not wish to influence that. And I know my name was mentioned, yes. I do appreciate you sir saying this is a quasi judicial body. Because it is true that if you say that this ten percent rule doesn't apply and none of these state laws apply, when I build my home, my neighbor cannot complain. And that's the part which I'm ready, I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to in the actual part. But the biggest concern is grading not being considered. The property value, I think now I understand why the neighbor is, I have a rectangular plot. So for me, those things don't really matter, but I understand how it is when people don't have a straight plot, how their property values are. My property value is affected just with the fact. But anyway, I'm not going to get into the personal issues of my property value and, and all that. I, I come here clearly as a property owner, tax-paying resident, expecting the commission to make sure that no unfair advantage or I don't lose value beyond whatever is, is required. But yes, those are big points which are brought up. The concern I said is no survey done. Privacy part, as I said, I showed my struggle to get to that, and that was really obscene. I do appreciate Julia for listening to me when she said, oh, that's your issue. I was actually shocked that they said you have to talk to the neighbor versus me sit thinking that all these knowledgeable people, planning staff must be, I have an engineering background, someone must have at least thought, well, this doesn't look right. But I was told, no, you have to go and talk. I'm like, this doesn't even make sense. I have to, you know, go and talk to my neighbor and say this is my concern, which was a surprise. The only reason I'm here is because I paid the two sixty dollars. All the other fourteen emails which were there were rejected by the person who approved it in the first place. So the only way I can come here is by going through this and having something official. And I've gone ahead with it, but I do feel disturbed by what I've had to go through mentally. And kind of the rules which the city is on something very obvious, you know. I've put in those pictures which were blatant looking into the restroom. And that is something which I said, I'm going to publish it in the papers if I don't, and that's why these people backed down. Anyway, thank you, but I do appreciate the questions, the rules, but this became something which is a learning process for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll ask for discussion and eventually a motion from my colleagues. All right, Vice Chair Shukla.
So I, I understand the concern the appellant has, but what I'm going to talk about is that the concern the appellate has, but what I'm going to talk about is that there are many properties like this in the corner. I live in one of them. And um, think about it, if this house was a straight line, that the whole house on the right side will, the whole house will be closer to your home. This is just the corner of the, on the right, when you face the house on the left side, on the right side, you are just a little corner. And then house turns, the direction is completely opposite. So you have less, I feel that it is less um, uh, obstructive in a way because when the two walls next to each other and it's let's say ten feet apart, you are like seeing each other's in each other's house, but this is angled. So there is one advantage of that because the house is um, just the corner is coming to the boundaries and then it wall just turns away. That's one. So the second one is that um, I mean, I, uh, this happens a lot and sometimes in the corner, like at the corner, sometimes it becomes even four feet because people put some decorative trims in my name. My, I live in my both houses on both sides are two-story. I have single story. And I, I mean, I look at from my dining room, their window. And I have gone to their home and I've tried to see, yeah, you can, if you really want to see it, then you can like peep in and look at it. But it's very difficult to see because the distance is very far. So that's the second one. And also I would say that the grading, when there are rules and regulations that they ask you to do a survey plan when the grading is at certain slope. And I understand that you want to measure the ha, from the center of the plot, but also there is um, set, um, what is it called easements? Sometimes these plots have easements either on the backside. And so they lose lot of land, they can't build certain things. Like in my lot, I have lot of backyard, but I can't build like ten feet from behind because there are utility lines are going through my backyard. So I, I don't, I don't know what their situation is, but that's the way the lots are divided. So, so my cons, I, I think that they have followed the rules. Our planning staff has done thorough job um, making up, like making sure that they follow the rules and regulations and follow the standards. Also, the Sunnyvale City, there are some houses are coming in Sunnyvale City which are very modern, meaning the house plates are ten feet above. This house follows like eight, the standard nine feet floor plate and then eight feet. And then slope is going backwards. So I don't think that the house is raised up. So um, so that is good thing. I would say that they have reduced their windows from the top floor is a family room. So they have really given up. They've given up large windows from family room, just made it small, small windows. So I think they have really worked with the neighbors to accommodate their all wishes. So I feel that um, um, it's a very modest house, very short, a very small room. So I feel that it's really well done with good materials and they have worked with lot of neighbors. They worked, so I think I, I feel that it's um, I don't see any problem. And I think when, as long as the uh, the measurement of side setback, how to measure and it's based on the, these are the ordinances made based on the zoning. And uh, so they don't go lot by lot. And, and in San Jose, they are giving up because we are, we needing housing. So if they build, build ADU, there are different rules. You would not be able to object it if they will just look into your house. They are not building ADU. So they can still go back and come back with two ADUs in their front and in their back. And you would have, we would not be there, even staff can't do, nobody can do anything. So I think um, uh, I would say that this is very modest house and we should, um, we have seen, I mean, the Sunnyvale is changing and you will be building um, the other neighbors will be building two-story homes and they'll be building higher, a much bigger. So I think um, I'm completely going to be uh, for the applicants and I'll be approving the, I mean, I'll be for the staff recommendation, the one. That's my comments, but that's, that's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Shukla. Next, we have Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. If my colleagues are ready, I'm ready to make a motion. You know, I don't see any other hands up, so I guess I should just jump straight to it. Um, and my motion is to um, is for alternative one. As staff has recommended, deny the appeals and uphold the decision of the Director of Community Development to approve the design review permit for the proposed two-story, single-family home based on the recommended findings for approval in attachment two and subject, subject to the conditions of approval in attachment three with one slight amendment to the conditions of approval. That, and that would be the eight-foot privacy fence, side fences. That's what we said before, right?
To add a condition to clarify that that would be required?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
And that's my motion.
Actually, to clarify, Commissioner Davis, that would be alternative two.
Oh, sorry, sorry, it's okay. That's correct, that is alternative two.
All right, so your motion, Commissioner Davis, is alternative two and Commissioner Segura.
I wanted to second that. I'm uh, in favor of this project. Looking at the data and uh, what's going on here, I think this will add to the neighborhood.
Just one second, you'll have a moment to speak to that. All right.
Sorry.
It's okay. Commissioner Davis, to your motion.
Okay, so I, I, I'm very sympathetic, sympathetic to the, the appellants. Uh, but we, we have to follow the law here. I understand, I live in a single-family home. I am actually in a single-story overlay district, it's in Eichler. Before you guys get excited about it, I kind of regret us passing that now. Times, times change, right? Um, and with people working at home, you just need more space. Thirteen hundred square feet's not enough for a family anymore. Don't get me started on broadband in the city because we don't get enough broadband for everyone to be home either. I, I've going through the written appeals and hearing what was support. I just, I didn't find them convincing. On the bathroom issue, um, I've lived in California since nineteen ninety-nine. I, I'm still shocked that we build bathrooms with clear glass. I've not seen that anyplace else. And um, if you're worried about someone looking into your bathroom, it's very easy to frost your glass. I, I, it just doesn't, it seems like we're twisting ourselves in knots over something that the rest of the country, it never comes up. So um, I mean, we frosted the glass in one of my kids' bedrooms because you can see it from the front door, right? That's I, I, I just don't see it as an issue. The neighborly thing is to just take care of your own, take care of yourself there. On the lot width, uh, on the lot width, I, I think we probably do need some clarification, but I think if we followed the, if we interpreted the rules the way the appellate does, I think just about every cul-de-sac in the city would be non-compliant. Just doing some back of the envelope calculations, we would need seventeen and a half feet of, of total side yards for, for this lot. That's, that's impossible to build on, right? Interpreting it that way would actually really be in the city's, not in the city's best interest because that would make these large irregular lots worth a lot less money because you couldn't build on them with these kinds of, with these kinds of setbacks. That's, uh, so it doesn't, it doesn't strike me as practical. I do think we need some clarification on, on how we're, we're measuring that. On the solar shading, I am really sympathetic. Yeah, especially with the, the rates that have gone up on our, on our metered electricity. But one, I mean, you, you own your property, right? So there are things you can do. You, you can't, you can't put all your solar panels in the most ideal spot. I've learned that on my house as well. That's just kind of part of, there, there is no perfect property, right? So I, I, I'm still kind of distressed that the applicants, not the appellants, have had to go through all of this. They have, uh, they're, they're very much in the sandwich generation, uh, taking care of their parents with a young child. This is, this is great for Sunnyvale. I'm very heartened by seeing the diversity of people who are here. It's what I love about this city and so on. But it shouldn't be this hard to, to modify your property for your needs. This is one of the few cases that um, we actually are talking about Sunnyvale law instead of state law where our discretion has been removed. But the fact that we used to have these kinds of discussions for every development is probably why the state has been taking away our discretion. So um, the, the pendulum went too far away from the rights of the property owners and it's being right-sized a little bit. So that's why I made the motion and we'll be voting yes for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, and Commissioner Segura, to your second.
Thank you. I did go over the project data, looked it over and I mean, I'm doing this day-to-day things of that nature. And I did not see anything that is out of the ordinary when looking at this and the laws and regulations from the data that I received or that we received. And I do think it will bring a great value to the neighborhood and I don't see any reason why not to go forward with this project, so I'm in favor as well.
All right, you, Commissioner Segura. Uh, next we have Commissioner Saroni.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So I, I think both the uh, uh, appellants had some very, you know, well-thought-out and well-explained uh, concerns. But I, I, in the case of the uh, privacy issues, I feel like that's been addressed by the frosted glass. And frankly, I, I don't know why you need frosted glass if it's in the stairwell. I have a similar situation, the house next to me is a, has a second story with a a high window on the stairwell and it's, it's clear glass. So, and as Commissioner Davis said, you know, in, in, in my house, we made a decision not to uh, use frosted glass in uh, one of the bathrooms, but we have curtains because somebody could just walk by the bathroom. So uh, there, uh, and in other parts of the house, I have frosted the glass for decorative reasons. So that is also a doable thing. So I feel that's addressed. Regarding the setbacks on the irregular lot, there might be an argument to uh, for the city to look at this and clarify or even change how they're doing it. But in this case, we're doing it the way it's been done in the past. And I think it's appropriate to be consistent with what uh, uh, you know, what we've done before without, unless, you know, I think going forward, if the city wants to make a policy change and change that, that's fine. We, um, this is, it's not unusual for us to see um, a proposed second story being put on a house and privacy concerns raised by neighbors. But I, I would say this uh, the way the um, applicants have worked with the neighborhood and made changes to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors. It's, I, I would uh, characterize this as a, as a, an outstanding example of how one approaches a project like this. So um, I am supporting the motion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Saroni. Next, we have Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'll be supporting the motion. I am able to make the required findings for, for, for approval in attachment two, subject to the modified conditions of approval. As was probably obvious by a number of my comments, my biggest heartburn was over this solar study, but I am, after discussion, after hearing from everybody, I'm, I'm convinced that satisfies the requirements of section nineteen fifty-six zero two zero B, B one of guarding, regarding the solar shading and out, regarding the solar shading analysis requirements. I will confess that sometimes I think we should be requiring the analysis to be a little more readable to those who are not qualified professionals. This is not the first time I've seen a solar shading analysis and been like, I get that we're putting a three-dimensional thing into a two-dimensional picture, but I do sometimes wish these were a little more detailed because this is not the first time I've gotten a, we've had a dispute relating to a solar shading analysis and I've had a lot of follow-up questions because the initial chart was not, was not as clear as it could be. Regarding the other that I, this is not a commercial zone, so we don't have to worry about the effects of any McChicken on neighbor, on neighborhood development. But no, uh, the, but no, regarding some, regarding the other points. This, we do, we, we don't get that many of them anymore, but we used to actually get on a fairly regular basis a lot of appeals, a lot of, about, a lot of detailed consideration about item, about essentially, this is the first or one of the first two-story homes in a single-story neighborhood. As has been, as, as was brought up earlier, there is a single-street story home overlay option. I'm not going to comment on potential other two-story home, homes that haven't been built yet. I think that's, I think that is speculative to the point that it's out, that's something we should not be getting, that it would be inappropriate for us to consider making the decision. However, I will say that, that in applicant's presentation, house, the two-story, the existing two-story house one is actually one of the first things I noticed when I was walking the neighborhood. And it was just like, so I was just kind of like a, there aren't a lot of two-story homes in this general vicinity, but there is one that is very clearly visible from the cul-de-sac. Like it was, it was something that struck, stood out to me. And so that doesn't make it a predominant, it doesn't stop from being a predominantly one-story neighborhood, but it is. But when we're talking neighborhood compatibility, that is something I definitely, I definitely took into account. The, I thought, well, I thought appellate's discussion of, well, and I'm agreeing with other commissioners here, but while I did think appellate's discussion of different approaches and calculating about size and calculating setbacks, I thought that was interesting. I, we are not in any of the cities referenced in appellate's presentation. We are in the city of Sunnyvale and we need to be applying this consistent with how we have applied, with how we've applied those calculations also in the city. If we want to modify how we do things and modify or clarify, and I, and I agree that at very least a clarification the next time we do a code update would be, would certainly be useful. I, it would not be, this, that, to my mind, that would be a policy change. It is not appropriate to make a policy change in an appeal. That is something that the city, that the saying that the city council needs to do on, upon, on recommendation from the planning commission. That's not something we can do tonight. All the other findings regarding the architecture, regarding the park, regarding the parking requirements, et cetera. I can make all of those and therefore I will be voting yes on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. All right, seeing no other commissioner hands. So from, from my perspective, there, there's three things I'm looking at. The first is to acknowledge the fact that tonight we are gathered in, in a situation that feels a bit acrimonious. And that's just the nature of, of the work sometimes. And it's unfortunate because it's community and it's a neighborhood and that's unfortunate. We're being asked on one hand to limit the rights of a property owner. We're, we're being asked on the other hand to preserve the, the privacy and uh, the sense of safety of other neighbors. And that, and they feel like they're opposed. And that, and they feel like they're opposed and that we can't possibly find necessarily a middle ground, and that's a tough place to be. I don't think anyone is going to leave here tonight feeling fully satisfied. I think that the homeowner, the applicant has already made concessions aside from what they would have originally wanted. I think the neighbors are going to feel like now there's a second-story monstrosity. And then, and I'm using that word quite deliberately, because that might be what it feels like. And that's, and that's kind of the reality for a neighborhood that doesn't have necessarily a lot of two stories. But as my fellow commissioners have already said, the commission here isn't in the business of redesigning policy. We're, we are constrained by what policy does exist in our job. It does require human interpretation at times. We try and do it consistently and ethically. I think another consideration is the context. As has, as has been pointed out by many people, nearly every house in that neighborhood was built in 1956 by T.J. Martin. And I can tell you this, it wasn't Eichler's, and no disrespect. I also, I I live in a neighborhood that is built in 1957. And it was a bunch of houses, and they they optimized for two things, speed and affordability. That's what they optimized for. It is most certain that homes within Sunnyvale, especially in those, in those areas, are going to continue to evolve, because insulation, windows, size, it it doesn't really meet an evolving need for the community of Sunnyvale. It's interesting at times. Sunnyvale is in, of course, the heart of Silicon Valley, which is, you know, probably, you know, at least conceptually, one of the most quickly evolving spaces and technology, and this is an area that that we also struggle in. In in my final point is, I do want to say this, and I'm only really representing myself and not my fellow commissioners here, is that I don't think we want to set a precedent where it matters if it's generation, multi-generational living or not. Where it matters if you're a single person, you want to have a five-bedroom house, that's fine. If you like to garden or not, that shouldn't be relevant to about the size of house you want. If you are an immigrant or not, that shouldn't be relevant to how we interpret things here. And we don't want people to feel like they have to campaign to get all their neighbors to say, I support that. Because what happens if you're unpopular? What happens if if you're a curmudgeon? What happens if you don't like your neighbors? That's okay. This is, you know, that's that's completely legitimate to not like your neighbors. So I say that because I don't, if anyone is is listening, which there's probably not that many, other than in this room, we don't, we we shouldn't set a precedent like that, where you have to be popular to get what you want. And so for those reasons, and I am going to be supporting this issue as well, I I I very much feel for the appellants, and I think you did, you you raised your points, and I think that the whole reason that I'm on this commission in the first place is because I was at one point an applicant. And so I was given a recommendation that I was clearly passionate about it, and so to apply for this board. So I'm going to extend that same recommendation, since all of you had really great and very compelling points. And with that, recording officer, please conduct a vote.
The motion passes with seven yeses.
All right, thank you. And planning officer, what's the fate of this of this plan?
The decision is final with the planning commission.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for your time. We really appreciate it. All right, that takes us to non-agenda items and comments. Next person on the agenda is for oral reports announced by commissioners and staff to share. Do any planning commissioners have any non-agenda items or comments? Commissioner Saroni.
Can I ask staff a question? Tomorrow, in front of the city council, they're talking about the study issue process. And the consultants indicate that study issues from boards and commissions are using up a lot of staff time. So I was curious about, you know, what form does that take and and I guess we don't see that, so.
Yeah, that's a a good question. I don't know if it's necessarily the planning but they they can take up a lot of time. I think if we were having to write the staff reports and then doing the analysis later on. Another component is if we have to get a consultant and go through the whole RFP process, because that takes a little while. So a lot of those elements end up taking a lot of time and eating up kind of the, our general fund, funding for staffing for the policy items. I think maybe some of the other commissions might have a little bit more complicated things that might take a little further analysis with their staff, or they might not have enough staff to to help manage that.
If I understand what they, and I'm not sure what they seem to be saying was the process of getting it to the, you know, the February meeting or whatever is what's taking a lot of time. Is that what you were addressing or the the execution of the
Sometimes the execution, but yeah, actually getting them to February. It's just the the tight schedule from September to October, getting stuff ready for February, and then finalizing stuff a little bit further on after that, too. It just, it does take a lot of staff time.
It, you know, from the study issues I've seen, there's a a process where the, a lot, a lot of times the proposal study issue, what comes from the commission is is very simple, and then staff adds a lot of detail to it. And I guess I always thought, well, that staff wants to do it their own way. But it would certainly be possible to do a study issue proposal, you know, where, you know, as commissioners, where we would do research and put in a lot more detail. Would that help? Or would it just make make it more complicated? Throw that stuff out and so on.
I mean, we'd still have to do the analysis and go through all the materials that the commissioners provided. So it'd still take staff time to do it, but you're right, the the short version that we get from the commissioners is the the part that ends up taking us a while to to do the reports a little bit later on.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Saroni. Seeing no other commissioner hands. Planning officer, do you have any non-agenda items for us?
I do not.
Great. Okay, well then, what time do we have? Thank you to all who attended tonight. Your points were very appreciated, and your time is respected. And I'm happy to adjourn this meeting at 9:15 PM. Thank you all.